A sinched list.
Again, I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Morganton City Council on November 7th, 2022. I'm going to ask Councilman Chris Jernikin if you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual and with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call on Reverend Sheldon Miles, Gaston Chapel AME, for an invocation, please. Reverend Miles.
Let's bow our heads. To our God who is sovereign and in every place and at the same time, we come to you, Lord, to say thank you. God, we thank you for this place today, the concerns of the community, for those that are in leadership and has the responsibility to make the assessment. We pray that you would give wisdom, give understanding. God, we thank you for the citizens of Morganton. God, we ask your blessing. We ask your blessing. We ask your blessing on the city of Morganton. Lord, as we stand on the eve of another election, God, we pray that everything would be done in decency and in order on tomorrow. God, we give you glory. We give you thanks. We give you praise. For God, we know that you are God alone and that you hold us all in your hands. So Lord, we know that you are our Father, Christ, our Redeemer, and all of mankind as our brother and our sister. God, keep us in your will and bless us. Bless this session. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Miles. This time I'd like to introduce council. To my far right is Wendy Cato, Mayor Protem, Chris Jernikin, City Council, Louis Ving, our City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor, Sally Sandy, City Manager, Butch McSwain, City Council, Chris Hawken, City Council, Renee, sorry Renee Carswell, our City Clerk, and our interpreters for the deaf, Danette Stelma-Bridges and Tiffany Patterson tonight. We have several items of public advocacy. We have one major announcement, which this council is thrilled to welcome, our new development and design director, Wendy Smith. She started work on Monday, November 7th. Is Wendy in the audience? Wendy, please stand. We need to get a good look at your face. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Under announcements for community appearance awards, I'm going to ask Cheryl Granton, who is the Chairman of our Community Appearance Advisory Commission, to come forward and present some awards.
As you said, I'm Cheryl Granton. I'm the Chair of the Community Appearance Advisory Commission. And the Community Appearance Advisory Commission is a nine-member, mayor-appointed, citizen commission that initiates, promotes, assists, and advises city council on community beautification issues. We are here tonight to present the annual Community Appearance Merit Awards. These awards are considered annually for properties that have gone above ordinance requirements and are making significant enhancements to the appearance of Morganton. By their example, they are encouraging others to do the same and elevate Morganton's appearance to a higher standard. But before distributing the awards, the commission would like to first thank the city of Morganton and those partners who contributed to the recent historic Courthouse Square renovations. We would like to encourage more of these type projects. Benefits of a project like this is sometimes difficult to know what the results are in the long run. However, we believe projects like this elevate Morganton and the county as a whole to a better standard of living and encourage public and private investment in our community. So thank you for supporting this project. All right. At this time, I'd like to ask the Community Appearance Advisory Commission members in attendance to please come forward to the front and now for the awards. We have two recipients this year. The first recipient is Sossaman's Funeral Home and Crimatory Center. We ask that those representatives join us up front, and that would be Jimmy and Donnie Coxey, Paul and Penny Littman, and Hannah Lippford. Please come forward. This award is given to Sossaman's due to consistent and outstanding beautification efforts to their property on South Sterling, located on a gateway corridor to Morganton. The CAAC has recognized this business location several times over the years and wishes to renew our gratitude for a job well done. Please accept this award as a token of our appreciation. Thank you. Would you, if you have anything that you'd like to say?
Chris?
Okay. Is there anything you would like to say? If you'd like to say a few words?
Thank y'all very much for this award. It means a lot to us. Thank you, Paul. We try to keep the commission going. It was started by J.C. and Paul and Penny have done an excellent job.
Yes, it's beautiful. All right. The other award for 2022 goes to the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics. And we ask that they come forward. Math and science? Very. Okay. The Community Appearance Advisory Commission is pleased to award North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics one of this year's annual Community Appearance Merit Awards. While we understand their work is not yet done, this award is given to NCSSM in appreciation for its contribution to the enhanced appearance of the city of Morganton for historic renovations to former North Carolina School for the Deaf buildings that have already taken place. The commission looks forward to your continued building historic preservations and tree preservation efforts as well as new improvements as the campus continues to evolve. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Just thank you to everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the entire council. And as you mentioned, thank you to everybody who's been in this community, the School for the Deaf. We really inherited some beautiful buildings. We're happy to do what we can to sort of honor that, but also to be a part of this greater community. It's a high standard to live up to. So we're honored to receive this.
Great.
Both groups back. Chris?
Back to business. Good to see you, James. Good to see you, ma'am.
The Community Appearance Advisory Commission appreciates the dedicated efforts of these two entities and asks that we all do our part, no matter how small, to improve in the appearance of our community. Let's keep Morganton beautiful and thriving. Thank you.
Cheryl, thanks so much. Next on our agenda is an announcement with our MAID competition awards. I'm going to call Abby Gentry Nelson, our Main Street Coordinator, and Paul Gant forward from the Burke County Public Schools to announce the winners.
Yes. So thank you all for having me here tonight. I have some wonderful news to share. If Chad will show the presentation, we'll go through it pretty quickly. So MAID stands for Morganton Art Design and Engineering. It began in 2018. This is our fifth competition, and tonight I have the pleasure of announcing our winners in both the middle and high school categories. This event really builds partners within our community with industry as well as our schools. This slide here is just one example of that partnership. Since the beginning, NCSSM has been involved in this event, and this is the first year that the NCSSM Morganton Fab Lab created our trophies, which were absolutely beautiful, and just one example of the many partnerships that we've created since 2018. Prizes were awarded to first, second, and third-place teams in middle and high school. This year's challenge was titled the Assembly Line Challenge, and it was held outside on our beautiful historic courthouse square on Friday, October 21st. I have Paul Gant here with me with Burke County Public Schools that he will discuss a little bit about everything that happened that day. But before I hand the mic over to him, I just wanted to show a few images that were captured that day. We had, goodness, I think close to 80 students and their teachers on site. There were 11 teams, so we're still building every year in hopes to encompass not only Burke County schools, but we would like to see this grow to other counties as well to compete here in Morganton. We had a wonderful time, and many of the students are here tonight and their teachers, but a few did have parent-teacher conferences till 7:30 and couldn't make it. As I mentioned, Paul Gant, he has been with me since the beginning and has developed each year's challenge. And so before we introduce the winners, I'm going to ask for him to step forward and explain this year's challenge and why MAID is so important to our region, our county and city.
All right. The whole idea behind MAID is to actually bridge the gap kind of from our past history in manufacturing and creation that we had in Burke County and Morganton, where I grew up. And when all that kind of left off, I feel like we lost some of those sparks of creativity in all of its manifestations, whether it's producing a product or producing like artistic value. Some of those things, those craft people left whenever these industries took off and left with them. And through MAID, this gives us an opportunity to show students once again these things that made Morganton and Burke County what it was, and then reintroduce those in a positive way. This year's challenge, we decided to just make something. We get too focused sometimes on this beautiful product or thing, and we just focus on the thing, but we don't think about, well, how did it get here? What created the thing? I'm always a big fan. It's like, I don't want the thing. I want the machine that made the thing. I think that's better for our community. That's better for building, and that's better for growth. And so this year, we focused on building a product that was simple. I didn't want the focus to be on the product. So these students were delivered a set of plans, just emailed to them at the beginning of the week saying, this is what you're going to build. Here's the tools you're going to use, and that's about it. And so they showed up on site, and then they had to create not just the thing. Because the thing is there, and it is important, the final product, but they had to create the system. They had to make the system that made the park onsite by scratch and on a very short timeframe. And that higher level of thinking and order of thinking, I think, is what we need as citizens and our children need as citizens of Burke County and Morganton as we continue this growth forward. Because if we focus on the product or just teaching the skill for the product, there's so much that we're not teaching. The process, the problem solving, the ability to think on your toes. We cannot predict accurately what is going to come to Burke County and make it great again, greater than it is, let's say, because I love it here. It's a great space. So we have to have students that can mold and react to these things. And so we have to have them ready to like, whatever shows up, whatever comes in the business park, these students in this populace is ready to change and mold and react to what is here. But if we teach them on a specific product, we steal that mobility of their growth. And so this year's challenge, we gave them that ability to actually take a product and not focus on the product. Oh, yes, please make it well, make it repeatable, manufacture it in the way that we're used to, but also create the system that makes it. And that problem-solving bit, I think, is the most important part of this whole competition and what we've tried to engrain in each competition that we come up with. That creative problem-solving-on-the-spot thing, because our students need it, our community needs it, and for future growth of our county and our city, I think it's vital that we not just do it, but do this. These students are here that made it here. They need to see that we support this mindset and this growth model for our city and our community. And I want to thank everybody here in the crowd, the students, council, mayor, for actually allowing us to present this, because what these students did was pretty miraculous, considering like they showed up and it's like, here's the stuff. Make it, make it fast, make it pretty, make it good. And you got, well, four hours to do it. Have fun. And they did it. And they did. They did some miraculous things. And so as they come up here, and we're going to go ahead and invite them, if you were in the MAID competition, come on up, and Abby's going to do a better job of giving you the credit that you're due, because these students did some amazing things. And Abby will give schools and introductions to them.
So as I make the announcements, if y'all would just raise your hands, and this is an invitation to not only the students, but also the teacher coordinators as well, if you want to come down. So in third place, we had East Burke Middle School. Second place, Heritage Middle School. First place in the middle school category was Liberty Middle School. And then for high school, third place, Freedom High School. Second place went to NCSSM Morganton. And then first place in our high school category went to Patton High School. So they're being very bashful, but they did a phenomenal job, and I really appreciate all those that were able to make it here tonight. So in concluding, I just want to give a big thank you to all of our sponsors that helped make this happen, including the city of Morganton. Y'all have had our back since the very beginning, as well as NCSSM and Work in Burke. So again, it was a wonderful event. We hold it annually. Thank you for your support, and a big congratulations to these students.
Abby and Paul, thank you so much. It was an outstanding day to see the students really working hard on the projects. Next on our agenda is a proclamation for Burke County Nonprofit Day. And get back to it. I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas charitable nonprofit organizations in Morganton and throughout Burke County save taxpayers thousands of dollars through their services and contribute significantly to the high quality of life for all our citizens and residents, and whereas these organizations are committed to serving the educational, cultural, civic, health, religious, human service, recreational, philanthropic, environmental, and other diverse needs of residents of Morganton and Burke County, and whereas the staff and volunteers of all Burke County nonprofit organizations are dedicated to upholding the high standards of community services, donating their time and effort to making a difference in the lives of others, and whereas the observance of Burke County Nonprofit Day, also known as One Burke Gives, on Tuesday, November 29th, 2022, provides a unique opportunity for the citizens and residents of Morganton and throughout Burke County to join together in appreciation and support of the many contributions made by nonprofit organizations to our continued well-being while boosting awareness for continued growth. And whereas to that end, One Burke Gives has been established as a day to rally financial support through charitable contributions to all Burke County nonprofits. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor Morganton, urge support of Burke County Nonprofit Day, also known as One Burke Gives, on Tuesday, November 29th, 2022, and encourage all citizens and residents of Morganton to recognize the positive impact nonprofit organizations have on the quality of life of the citizens of Burke County. Issued the 7th day of November, 2022, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Renee Carswell, City Clerk, to have a motion to accept this proclamation. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. The motion passes. We have another proclamation, which is Operation, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Oh, yes. Hey, I'm sorry.
You're fine. I jumped up here because I assumed that's how it works.
That's how it works, exactly.
I just want to say, I actually moved out of the camera right here, and then I betrayed Joel Welch right there by himself. So I'm sorry about that. But I just want to say really fast, thank you for this proclamation. We've asked for it for the last three years. We've been doing it for three years. One Burke Gives is an important day because it's a day to get all of Burke County together on one day on the Global Giving Tuesday that's celebrated around the world, together to give to all the nonprofits who come together to raise funds on our platform. So Burke County United Way is involved as a host. We host the platform. We pay for it every year so that online, any nonprofit, 501(c)(3) can join us and raise funds absolutely for free with us. And we think it's super important, of course, to keep it that way. So this year so far, we have 28 nonprofits. I checked it today. So they had until tomorrow to sign up, so we'll see how it goes tomorrow. But the first year that we did it, we raised $50,000 together in a 24-hour period. And I didn't mention, One Burke Gives Giving Day is a 24-hour period online. And so the next year, last year, we raised, we doubled, more than doubled that. So we ended up raising together 100,000, more than 100,000. So we're hoping to go at least 10% this year. And so we just hope that everyone after Black Friday, after Cyber Monday, remember that there's Giving Tuesday, and from wherever you are, you can log in online at oneburkgives.org and give to your favorite nonprofits in Burke County. So I appreciate it, and thank you for this proclamation once again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is another proclamation called Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas the residents of the city of Morganton have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas the city of Morganton seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veterans' service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from the military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the city of Morganton appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, now therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, the City Council of the City of Morganton hereby declares from November 7th, 2022 through November 13th, 2022, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, the city of Morganton encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made the immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place, business, or residence adopted this first day of February, no. Adopted this, 7th day of November, 2022. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Renee Carswell, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. I'd like to recognize Johnny Carswell, Vice Chairman of the Burke County Board of Commissioners and First Vice President of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
President-elect.
President-elect, excuse me.
I'm sorry. It changes real quick.
I understand.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Protem, and City Council, Ms. Manager and City Attorney, thank you for allowing me to be here today. We all know that America's cities and counties have a long and proud history of serving our nation's veterans, a legacy that continues to this day as we work with our federal, state, and local partners to ensure that former service members in our communities have access to the resources that they need. In North Carolina, we have over 600,000 veterans in North Carolina. We have over 6,000 veterans in Burke County. They need a place to go, and we have provided that here in Burke County. A green light, as we look at it, might not be much, but it is our way of saying thank you for those that have served, for those have given the ultimate sacrifice. A green light, we should be serving it every day instead of, you know, picking a week out of the year. Mr. Mayor, if you'll give me a little latitude, I'd like to recognize if there's any veterans in your audience tonight. Is there anybody? Do we have a World War II veteran by chance? Okay. How about a Korean?
Yes, we do. All right.
I'm not a World War II veteran. I'm a veteran.
Okay. World War II. Okay, let's see. Do we have any Korean veterans here, Korean War veterans? How about Vietnam era? Just stand up if you would.
Yes, stand up.
And then anybody else that's a veteran. Mayor, pick one up. Again, on behalf of Burke County and all the veterans in this county, thank you. Again, on behalf of Burke County and all the veterans in this county, thank you for the resolution that you did for us tonight. Appreciate it.
Johnny, thank you so much. Okay, we have a few upcoming events in Morganton. Uh, in downtown the city, in City Hall, Holiday Farmers Market is in November, it's on Saturday, November the 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 111 North Green Street. Our Winter Carnival and Memorial Tree Lighting is going to be Saturday, November 19th, beginning at 2:30 at 102 East Union Street. There'll be Santa visits, holiday games, sweets, and a fire and ice tower. It's going to be a free community event, the, will be, the Memorial Tree Lighting will be at 5:30, again, that's on November 19th. The Carriage Rides will begin Saturday, 19th, and will continue every Friday and Saturday until December 23rd. The rides will continue on Friday, November 25th, and Saturday, November 26th, from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. The Downtown Morganton Christmas Parade will be Tuesday, December the 6th, at 6:00 p.m. I understand this is going to be a normal Christmas parade, not a reverse Christmas parade. Uh, the Breakfast with Santa will be held at the Morganton Community House on Saturday, December 3rd at 8:30, and at 10:00 a.m., and Saturday, December 10th at 8:30 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. The tickets are on sale now at the UPS Store in downtown Morganton. Tickets are $8 for adults and $6 for kids 12 and under. The Blue Elves Christmas for Morganton Housing Authority Families will be Saturday, December the 10th, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Mountain View Recreation Center. We have art in the hall at City Hall. Uh, Thomas Thielman, who is a mixed media, he's a visual arts director at Caldwell Community College, he also teaches, his work combines a variety of disciplines and will be displayed at Morganton City Hall during the months of October and November. At Kama, our Performing Arts Center, Thursday, November 17th, at 7:30, The Sons of Serendip. Thursday, December the 1st, at 7:30, The World Ballet Series of Nutcracker. On Monday, December the 5th, at 7:30, A Christmas Spectacular. And in our Recreation Department, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, December the 6th, 7th, and 8th, is Christmas Cheer at the College Street Recreation Center. Next on our agenda is consideration of changing City Council meeting time on December the 5th, 2022. Sally?
Yes, so as the mayor just announced, there is a show at Kama on that night. And so we are asking that the council consider changing the meeting from 6 o'clock until 5 o'clock so that the council members would have an opportunity to go to the show at Kama when the meeting is over.
What's the wish of council?
I make a motion to move the meeting to 5 o'clock.
Okay, so the motion is to change the time from 5, uh, from 6 o'clock to 5 o'clock. Any, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our consent agenda, Sally, I believe we have nine items.
We do, and I am going to, uh, talk a little bit about those items and would ask you to consider approving those in a single motion unless someone would like something removed and discussed separately. So for those of you viewing at home, those items are, uh, minutes from the regular meeting held October 3rd, and also a closed session held on October 3rd, 2022. Tax releases in the amount of 402,065 doc, and 65 cents. Um, the budget amendment for electric vehicle charging stations, we have received a $20,000 grant and are putting $10,000 in electric fund revenue, uh, with that to establish and to install electric vehicle charging stations at Cotova Meadows Park and the soccer complex. Um, those are on order, and we do not know when we will receive those. Uh, the other ones are going in, um, around town at Martha's Park and the Chamber, and soon at Starbucks. Uh, an amendment to the schedule of fees and charges, which sets up a, a series of fees related to fire inspection violations, and those are for repeat visits for the same violation. And those would go into effect tomorrow, November the 8th, 2022. And then amendments to the personnel policy, which would extend our longevity program beginning this year to employees with two and a half years of service at a one and a half percent payment. And that would be effective November, at the end of, of November 2022 is when you would qualify. Uh, to reduce the probationary period for new hires from nine months to six months. And to allow employees who are coming from other local governments or state government in the same retirement system to transfer in their sick leave after completing a successful probationary period. Uh, several DOT agreements, one of those, and, and we have been talking about this project for years, in, in literally about 10 years. Um, this is the railroad bridge at, uh, 64 and 70 on Fleming Drive, the, the one over by Morganton Heights. And we finally have the utility agreement that we are being asked by DOT to sign, uh, an estimated cost of 217,829 to relocate a water line. That would be the city's cost, and it would be based on actual costs, and we would pay that at the end of the construction period. So probably 23, 24 budget year is when we're looking at that. Uh, the second agreement is also part of this project with North or Southern Railway, and that is to get permission to relocate and pay them a license fee to relocate that water line along their right-of-way, uh, in the amount of $50,300. That also would be paid at the end of the project, probably 23, 24 budget year. Then award of contract to connect Delivery 7, our new electric substation delivery, to the existing, um, distribution system. And would ask you to award the contract to Southeastern Transmission and Distribution in the amount not to exceed $67,000. That money is included in our budget. And then also to award a contract for renovating the gymnasium at Mountain View Community Center. Uh, the first part of that to be to replace the gym floor, would ask you to award a contract not to exceed for 127,000 to Sports Flooring Group, that is to replace it with a wood floor. And there'll be several more parts to this project. Would recommend, as we have budgeted, that we pay for this project that is estimated to be a total of $160,000 with $80,000 in state grants, and then match that with 80,000 of our ARPA funds.
Do any members of council wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Not to have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
To have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sally, I did miss the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency update.
Oh, we have nothing this time.
Okay. Uh, okay, underneath business, uh, our first item is consideration of an alternative design request submitted by Western Piedmont Community College for the Construction Trades Building Project. I'll call on Louis.
You're going to open that meeting? Are we going to open the public hearing?
Say, public hearing, so, public hearing is now open. Now.
Okay. Um, so would ask for the city council to consider continuing the public hearing. Um, would ask that you consider continuing that until the January 2023 city council meeting. The applicant has asked and requested this in order to work on an alternative design that would go back through the zoning process, go back through the staff review, and then to planning and zoning before coming to you.
Okay, so what's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to table the discuss, the open hearing.
I believe if I may, uh, please, I mean, if you just, uh, the motion would probably be to continue the hearing until the-
In the early January meeting.
Whatever the date of the January scheduled meeting is.
I have a motion?
What do you say?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I need to close the public hearing?
No, it'll remain open for all this time.
It's just recessed until January.
Okay.
I'll remember to-
Moving along, parliamentary, moving along. Consideration of a resolution of intent to sell property at the intersection of East Union Street and White Street. Sally?
Yes, so before you for consideration tonight is, um, an offer to purchase city property. The city is the owner of three parcels of property, um, that are adjoining vacant tracts of real property. They add up for this piece to about a half an acre, and they are located at the corner, um, intersection of East Union and White Street. So these properties were owned by the Morganton Redevelopment Commission, and when that group was dismantled, they were transferred to the city of Morganton. The city's property adjoins two other vacant tracts of land on, on a couple of sides of it, and, you know, we refer to ours as the corner, and then there's the property around it. So the city has received an offer to jointly purchase this. The offer is from Norval Management LLC and Amicus Partners P L L C, and that's a developer from Concord. And the offer is to purchase the property for the sum of $115,000. Uh, the development proposal includes housing, a multi-use building that would have about 5,000 square feet of commercial slash retail space, and up to 40 apartments in the project with parking that would go with that. City staff believes that this is a, a, a good proposal and a very good use of that property. Uh, feel like it would be a major economic development project for downtown, feel like it would start to fill gaps in housing, which I don't have to tell anyone how much of that we have, and that is of all types. And feel good about the offer and would recommend approval. Um, the process, and we would use the negotiated sale and upset bid process that we have used before. If you wish to move forward, we would adopt a resolution of intent tonight. Um, the proposal, uh, the partners proposing this would then deposit 5% of the sale price with the city at such time we would advertise for, uh, and there'd be a 10-day upset bid time that someone can come in and upset the bid. It would be required that the dollars meet the stat, statute limits for that, and also that the project be a similar project and something that would match what is being proposed. If you adopt the resolution of intent tonight, then we will collect deposits, get the advertisement, and then we've been through that period, assuming there are no upset bids, or we've been through as many as there are, then at the December meeting, you would then come back and consider doing a contract.
What's the wish of council?
I make a motion to adopt a resolution declaring a surplus property, certain lands at the intersection of East Union Street and White Street, and expressing the intent of the city to sell such lands to Amicus Partners P L L C and Norval Management LLC.
Thank you, Chris, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would note that representatives of the offerors, both Norval Management and Amicus, are here this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Expressing their interest.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next in consideration is a resolution of intent to sell property on East Meeting Street. Sally?
Mm-hmm, property in the same neighborhood. Uh, so six adjoining tracts of land that the city owns, 1.7 acres approximately. This too was redevelopment commission property that, that was then turned over to the city. Uh, we refer to this a lot as the 400 block of East Meeting Street, between White and Church Street. Um, no secret to this council that we have optioned this property several times before for a multitude of housing projects. And each time, we have gone through a process and the deal has not made, and so we have maintained ownership of the property, um, for various reasons. Have received an offer from Green Street Properties LLC to purchase this property. They are out of Concord, North Carolina, and the offer price is $425,000. Uh, the proposal is a project that could be as many as 70 residential units, a combination of townhomes and rental-type apartments, um, with garages with some of the units, rooftop decks, a dog park located on the property, and then green space and, and park space between the buildings. That's it in a nutshell. Uh, again, city staff believes that this is a really good proposal, that it is probably one of the first times that we've had a project that we feel like may actually make it till the end and come to fruition. Um, again, housing, something that we desperately need. Same process, the resolution of intent, 5% deposit, advertisement, 10 days for any kind of upset bid, and then at the end of that process in December, come back and consider a contract to move forward.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt a resolution declaring a surplus property, certain lands on East Meeting Street, and expressing the intent of the city to sell such lands to Green Street Properties LLC.
Thank you, Chris, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Butch, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, that, these two projects are incredibly exciting.
Butch, you sound really excited.
I know that you, I'm, I'm working at speaking, um, which you guys know I do. Uh, but I, it, it really, I know this is early in the process, but man, what potential this has.
Absolutely.
Any other comments?
It's exciting to see the partnership between local and outside community folks as well.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank those members for being here from out of town. Thank you so much, and your interest in the city of Morganton. Uh, next we consider entitlement funds to nonprofit for the fiscal year 2022.
I think we skipped community appearance ordinance.
Okay. We don't want to skip anything. East Meeting Street. Consideration of amendment to ordinances regarding the Community Appearance Advisory Commission, which we heard from tonight.
We did, and that's Louis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, obviously, we have indeed heard from the Community Appearance Advisory Commission, that's quite a mouthful, and, uh, their big day every year when they present those awards, but do a lot of other work as well. Uh, it, it was noted by staff, um, that there were some issues with the wording of the, the ordinance that, um, that set up this commission. There were some things that were unclear and, and left some gaps. Um, this is a commission that's appointed by the mayor. Uh, the changes are, are pretty simple, they aren't huge, but they would, um, first clarify that there could be more members, uh, as few as nine, as many as 12. Uh, secondly, uh, making clear that a staff, uh, that, that the city staff person assigned, uh, to the commission, uh, which would be the city manager or designee, which it usually is, would be the secretary to this commission. Uh, and making clear that they make their report for any budgetary requests at a time that it would still be doable, the old ordinance, unfortunately, with the timing, would, wasn't working right. Um, so they're, they're fairly simple changes, but felt they were necessary.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to amend sections 2.7301-7032 and 7034 and 7035 of the city's code of ordinances to amend the numbers and terms of membership, certain organizational provisions, and the annual report and budget requirements of the Community Appearance Advisory Commission.
Thank you, Chris, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? Thank you, Louis, for clarifying that. All in favor, please, 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 say aye. Motion passes. Now we shall consider the award of entitlement funds to nonprofit for fiscal year 2022. I'll ask Lisa Helton to come forward and give her report.
Good evening to everybody. Uh, this year, uh, for our fiscal year 2022 action plan for our community development block grant funds, we had $29,193 set aside for our grants and nonprofit program. Uh, we did have applications, uh, we had three applications that we received for, uh, we didn't have, uh, the, the three did not ask for the, the total amount, so we decided to, uh, divide the amount up and give it to each, each one of the, the three. So the Outreach Center, we, we recommend $17,115, uh, and they will be using that for their food distribution program. The House of Refuge, uh, we recommend to give them $5,989, and that is for operations for their shelter and to buy food. Uh, and also for options, we recommend $6,089, and that is to, uh, upgrade some, uh, kitchen appliances and, and stuff for the shelter.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to award fiscal year 2022 entitlement funds to nonprofits as outlined.
Thank you, Wendy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Lisa, thank you so much for all you do. Next is consideration of approval of a grant agreement and acceptance of $250,000 from Golden Leaf to Bethel Park Stream Restoration Phase One, and approval of a budget amendment. Sally?
Yes. So after our recreation master plan and years of discussion and planning and work, we are beginning the restoration of Bethel Park. And the first phase of that has to be stream restoration, and there's two streams that come there. And so we have been frantically applying for grant dollars in trying to help out with that. Just for everybody's reference, the total stream restoration and then the park redo and all of that's about probably a $4 million project. With today's prices, it may be a little bit more than that, but somewhere in the range of $4 million. We have received $250,000 from Golden Leaf. That is eligible to be spent on construction for the stream restoration project, cannot be used for the design and engineering, we're using other funding for that, but can go towards the construction for that. Would ask that the council approve it, accept the grant, approve the grant agreement, and then set up the budget amendment for it.
What's the wish of council?
I'm always real happy to approve, to make a motion to approve a grant agreement and accept $250,000 from Golden Leaf to be used for stream restoration Phase One construction at Bethel Park.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We need another motion, please, or Sally, if you'll...
Yeah, it's just the budget amendment for it.
Motion to approve a budget amendment to accept grant funds from Golden Leaf in the amount of $250,000.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next on the agenda, and Louis, make sure I don't miss one. Grant agreement, okay. A consideration of approval of a grant agreement and acceptance of $500,000 from North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund for Bethel Park improvements. Sally?
And the good news keeps coming, and we knew that we had been awarded this. This money can be used for the amenities in the park. So this is the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund at the state, and will only fund amenities. So this comes a little while after the stream restoration, but still very much appreciated. And you'll recall, when we applied for this, we were able to use the land and water fund money that we have already received, which was half a million, to match this. And so we didn't have to put any local money in to match this. Now ultimately, there's more money to get to do the whole project, but excited to approve this grant agreement and then the budget amendment going with it. And I will say that we got notice Friday of another $200,000 that we had applied for for this, and that makes our total grants that we have been successful with a very aggressive staff at getting $1,950,000 to date toward this project. So, and it, design work is ongoing, and we're probably going to be into bidding and then some construction, I'm guessing, spring, it may be late spring, but springish is what we're going to call that.
What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor, I was happy to do, enter a grant, a proposal for a quarter of a million. Think how happy I am to make a motion to approve a grant agreement and accept $500,000 from Partif to be used for park improvements and amenities at Bethel Park.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Need another motion?
Motion to approve a budget amendment to accept grant funds from Parks and Recreation Trust Fund in the amount of $500,000.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I would be remiss if I did not say this takes an awful lot of work, and a lot of work on the part of staff, and we got a handful of them who've been working really hard for this, and with our outside engineer that has been instrumental in helping us with this also.
Okay, I think our next thing is 30-day notice for vacancies.
No.
No, missed another one?
We have the building reuse grant.
Oh, this one?
Oh, that's the one beforehand, but we got 30-day notices first.
We will have a vacancy at BDI, Burke Development Incorporated. It's a mayor's appointment for one term that's expiring. And Chris Hawkins, we're going to ask you to be the designee for that, please. Fireman's Relief Fund, their two terms expiring. Their council appointee, Mark Bradshaw, and public safety appointee, David Ferber.
So those will be expiring in December, so if anyone wants to submit, they can submit to the clerk, to Renee.
To Renee. Last item of my business, which is a handout, is consideration of approval of a building reuse grant agreement, which will be a contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments to administer the building reuse grant and budget amendment for Project Vet.
I've got that, yes, it does. So we started the evening hearing about a lot of challenges and issues that we have, like all communities do, and we're ending the evening with a list of money and grants that we have received, so that's a good way to end. In September, you approved allowing the staff to apply for a building reuse grant for Project Vet, which is an economic development project for a local company that is expanding, and we applied for $200,000. We have been notified that we received that from the Rural Infrastructure Authority and the Rural Economic Development Division of the North Carolina Department of Commerce. So we need to approve the building reuse grant. We need to approve a contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments to administer that, and then approve a budget amendment for the $200,000 and the $10,000 in admin cost, and the admin costs are shared equally at $5,000 each by the city and then Burke County.
What's the wish of council?
I will make a motion to approve a building reuse grant agreement with the North Carolina Department of Commerce.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Need another motion, please?
Motion to approve the contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments to administer the Project Vet building reuse grant.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, and I need a third motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget ordinance of $200,000 in grant funds and $10,000 in administration costs.
Thanks, Chris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there anything else to come before Morganton City Council?
Denied.
Okay, hearing nothing? We adjourn.